Good evening. Welcome to the Carver Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, February 6th. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. We have openings on several committees. Please refer to the Board of Selectmen page on our website for a listing and an application. And it's 7 o'clock, so let's go with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. And Mr. Robertson will read our community prayer.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessings as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our community in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift up our prayers for all the citizens, for our community, that we've been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responses in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. All right, we now reach citizen participation. We set aside the first 10 minutes of a selectmen's meeting to hear from citizens and residents that may have some issues they'd like to bring before the board. Because they were not previously advertised, the board really can't respond to what is brought up, but we are willing to listen. And then we will pursue anything that's brought up afterwards and follow through on it. We do ask the citizens to limit their time to three minutes apiece to give other people the choice to speak. Do we have any citizens that wanted to speak this evening? There being none, then we will now move to our poll hearing. Verizon, New England, is requesting a poll for the Mass Department of Transportation on Rochester Road Bridge Project. Good evening. Could you give us your name and title?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name's Barry Maffini. I work for a company called UC Synergetic who does right-of-way work and engineering for Verizon. I'm not sure, there may be some confusion. I spoke with Mr. Crossman from Verizon earlier today, and the petition that I think you have before you should be for conduit, not a poll. The poll, there is a poll situation that has to be resolved, but as I understand it, as I'm told, poll work in that area is done by Eversource. So if you haven't already, you will be getting a petition from them for the poll work. This petition that you should have before you tonight is for conduit. Has everybody got something that says conduit on it?
But it is Verizon.
Yes, Verizon's conduit, that's correct.
Is everyone comfortable thinking that the advertisement, the poll versus conduit, is acceptable?
Yes, because the notice to a butters, it says conduit.
Okay, I have not seen that, but it's all the same butters, it's in the same area, it's the same work. Obviously, I'm sure everybody's familiar with what's going on out there. There's a bridge that's falling down that's going to get rebuilt, and the thought of this conduit will be in that bridge and proceed further down the road. So there will be some polls eliminated from that area, which everybody likes to see happen.
Do we have any residents here this evening that wanted to speak to this issue?
Just wondering when it was going to be done.
I think primarily is going to depend on when the bridge work is done.
That's what I was referring to.
Not the conduit, the entire project.
Aren't we all?
We know the bridge comes first. It was supposed to start in September, and it's not your problem.
Do you have any insights as to when the entire project may be completed?
Well, obviously, the bridge has to get built so the conduit is in place. And then beyond that, there's, I'm going to guess, a couple of hundred, if not more, feet of conduit that has to be built, and that will be done by Verizon, I would assume. And it may be part of the contract for the bridge. And as soon as that's in place, this cable, it has to be placed in it and cut over, has to be done. I also understand, because of the nature of the construction, and I don't know the details, but I'm told that there's some temporary things that have to happen in order to facilitate the bridge construction. So, and that's all going to happen.
So I think I heard you say mid-April? Is that accurate?
What year?
Yeah, yeah, that was going to be my excuse.
The spring of 2018 is supposed to start construction.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Questions from the board? Motion from the board?
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I just have to say this, there is a notice to a butters. You did receive the green cards?
They would not have come to me, they would have gone to Darryl Crossman from Verizon. I can't answer that, I'm sorry.
Okay, but they did go out.
That's part of the typical procedure. No, I don't know if the town sends them out. Some cases, the town sends them out. There are occasions, I think, where Verizon gets involved. But I think, in most cases, they go from the selectmen's office in the individual communities.
Subject to making sure the cards went out?
Well, if they haven't been notified, then we shouldn't be having to hear.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Not being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So mid-April, we're done. We are going to continue to have our updates on our budget meetings. Excuse me, Mr. Townsend, did you want to call your meeting to order for the finance meeting?
Sure. Sure. I'm Mark Townsend, I'm the vice chairman of the Finance Committee, and I'd like to call the February 6th meeting of the Finance Committee to order. And, Mr. Chair, can I introduce my members?
Yes, please.
Our members. To my left, Kate Banzel. To my right, Alan Germain. Kate and Alan are brand-new members of the Finance Committee, so welcome. Also, to my right, John Carter, Bill Duggan, and George Callahan.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we continue our budget hearings, and I believe we first have the Finance Department?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. And also, just congratulations to our two new members. As the selectmen read in the agenda earlier on, we are trying to get more volunteers for several boards and committees in the town, and thank you for that. We recently recruited two of your members, John Carter and Bill Duggan, to serve on the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge District. So one of the things are we recruit you for multiple tasks once you do there, so be careful what you volunteer.
Glad to have you involved.
Yes. So, Mr. Chairman, we had presented the budget tied into our four-step budget process earlier in January. At your last meeting, you met with the Fire Department and EMS. We've now scheduled a few other departments, and then on the 27th, we're looking to schedule the Police Department, which will round out the presentations from the departments. Also, the meeting on the 27th is when the consultants are coming in from New Hampshire that have put together our police analysis report, that they're going to be presenting to the board. So without further ado, I guess Meg, we're going to turn it over to you to provide an update to the board on the budgets, your budget.
Can I also use these budget reports? Because I know that, I believe what you received is our Softwrite budget report, but it won't really assist with the planning offices in my Finance Department offices, just because it's a different presentation or format. So the top one is a summary, and then the second one?
So this should be?
Get longer arms.
I apologize for the small. I was trying to change it before.
I almost left these at home.
I couldn't do it.
Nick, I still need a magnifying glass.
So we are at?
The Finance Department.
Stage for you to proceed.
Thank you very much. So what I just wanted to kind of start off with is a summary of fiscal 2017 and 2018 to date. I just kind of give an update on where the department is going. So in 2017, we brought on new treasure collector Lori Henault, who is an excellent addition to the finance team, and since bringing her onboard, we have been, our cash and receivable reconciliations have been complete and on time every month. We have also brought on Tanya Balu in accounting, and Denise Arsenal in the Treasure Collector's Office. Tanya has brought an excellent amount of detail and accounting experience to the accounting office. And Denise, if you have, hopefully, you've had the pleasure of dealing with her, because she has been an amazing addition to the Treasure Collector's Office. She is super upbeat, great customer service, and I have seen so many people come in angry, and when they walk away from dealing with her, they're extremely happy. So she's been a great addition as well. The Treasure Collector's Office has also received several compliments from various vendors and lawyers' offices about the level of professionalism in the office. And we've also received several compliments from veterans, seniors, and cranberry growers about the level of customer service and assistance from the assessing office. And Kathy Kay in the Treasure Collector's Office, this August, became a certified assistant collector. Lori Henault and I have been attending Treasure Collector School, and we have also had now a complete cycle with our assessing contractor, Paul Copinos, who has been just wonderful to deal with, also excellent professionalism and attention to detail. So this last year, when we did our tax rate recap and the tax billing cycle, it went smoother than it's ever gone. And Dee has also really stepped up as our principal assessor. And I didn't mention Lynn Colback or Christine Sylvia, and that's only because they have been doing what they always do, which is outstanding performances and going above and beyond in their job performances. In terms of what is ongoing with our Finance Department, we continue to have our weekly Finance Department meetings, and what has happened is that every single person now comes to those weekly meetings with a great attitude, wanting to share information between the departments, where that didn't exist before. We have made excellent progress in learning about one another's jobs and really trying to help one another out. One thing I'm working on right now is a consolidated Finance Department calendar, which will have everyone's deadlines. And so what I plan to do every month is to have the upcoming, like, three upcoming months, so that all three departments can see what each department is up against and to see how they need to work together to meet our deadlines, to really enforce that this is a team effort. Another thing I've implemented at these weekly meetings is a topic of the week. So if an issue has come up and we feel like maybe there is a miscommunication between departments, or one side would like to know more about a particular topic, we will have one person speak to that topic and kind of share their knowledge. So also, I think, I think when people learn more about what each department does, it helps them to do a better job, and they also appreciate what the other person does. We also had, well, town-wide, we had implemented an evaluation system, which, this is, we are now in our interim or mid-year evaluation, and what I think was once sort of viewed with a little bit of maybe fear, is actually now being embraced. I think people want to have structure, they want to know what, where their jobs should be going, and what they should be accomplishing. So I think that that's going tremendously well. And then we also have, and it was in our management letter, when the auditors came in, a fraud risk assessment. So most towns are using a consultant for that. I've reached out to a consultant, and he should be coming in shortly to assist us with that fraud risk assessment. And what that means is that he and I will be going out to the various departments, inquiring about internal controls, finding out what controls they have over cash, procurement, assets, to make sure assets aren't misappropriated. And then what he will do is he will produce a report that will note any deficiencies and suggestions for improving internal controls. So we should hopefully have that done by April. And then that also probably will mean that we'll be putting in a lot more policies and procedures into place, which also is, it's not only good for new employees, it, I think, just allows everyone to make sure that they're on the same page, that there's consistency in the work that's done. So that's where we stand. And my budget hasn't really changed all that much from last year, so I, should I wait for questions, or?
Show a quick overview of it.
So actually, one change in terms of salaries is that when we first transitioned to a Finance Department, we had one full-time employee in the assessing office being covered within the budget, and then we were waiting to see what the staffing needs in the assessing office were. And as it turns out, we do in fact need two full-time employees in the assessing office. So that second employee has been added to the budget for FY '19. Professional services for accounting includes Softwrite, our Gatsby 45 or OPEB valuation, our audit with Powers &amp; Sullivan, those are the main sources for that. Our assessing, other professional services for assessing includes our contract with Paul Copinos to do valuations. And other professional services for the Treasure Collector's Office includes our Harper's payroll system. I think those are the major expense lines. Everything else, I think, is pretty straightforward.
Questions from the board? Finance Committee?
Couple of questions through you, Mr. Chairman. One was, in the past, we used to get the payroll scheduled by employee lists and step increases and cost of them increases and things of that nature. Is that something that's in one of these packs? Like, it was a person by?
I have my department's.
I don't need it right now, but if that's something, maybe we can get a copy of it. That's fine. And looking at the, this sheet, I guess you'd call it, the Town of Carver Operating Budget, on the operating expenses, it looks like the department requested budget of $234 and the town administrator budget of $214. Could you talk a little bit about the $20,000 reduction, what we're trying to reduce or target?
Yes, because we have a couple of contracts in place that, as it turns out, well, Paul Copinos, our assessor, we have a contract for $40,000, but for his valuation, it was more, we signed a contract not knowing what level of service we were going to need from him in the transition to a new assessing department without a full-time assessor. So we haven't need to use his services as much, so that's why the, well, you're saying that there's a reduction from the department's requested to the town administrators recommended, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is the most current. I'm looking at $234 to $214.
Two, yeah.
For Finance Department operating expenses?
I have two, oh, $234, $234 to $214, yep. So the major areas are for accounting. We also had a reduction in our contract from Softwrite. So reduction in our contract from Softwrite, a reduction in our contract with the assessors, but that's offset with an increase for payroll. So that's mainly where it comes from.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, you get off easy.
Thank you.
Thank you, very nice job.
Thank you.
And the auditor did speak very highly of the Finance Department when he made his presentation here, so.
Well, I'd like to say that I'm very proud of my staff. I think that they've done an amazing job, because I think it was a lot of turmoil and a lot of stress, changing the format and all coming together, and I think everyone has really stepped up. So I'm quite proud of them.
Excellent.
Before you leave, just a quick observation. The big packet that I passed out is from Softwrite. So under DOR regulations, we have to identify the costs for each department separately. So we have assessors, accounting, and treasure collector are in that big packet. But since this department has been consolidated into one department, the summary that Mr. Carter was speaking off of, this is the consolidated numbers. So all those add up to this, but we still need to keep it in the old form, just because our software is set up to track that year over year, and then it rolls in. So again, the numbers add up to the same, it's just that you, they're just different summaries.
Yeah, and I think there's a proof on the final page of each of the reports to demonstrate that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, excuse me. And now I'd like to ask Operations and Maintenance to step forward. If you could introduce yourselves.
Hi, I am Dave Seintoff, Director of Operations and Maintenance.
John Woods, DPW Director and Deputy Director of Operations and Maintenance.
All right, we'd ask you to proceed with your presentation, and then we'll provide an opportunity for questions from the boards.
So as, as you know, this is a newly formed department that was, came to fruition in the calendar year 2017, and created many changes to numerous departments within the town's infrastructure. This department was formulated with the merger of Town DPW Buildings and Grounds Departments and the School Facilities Department. The department is headed by a director and deputy director overseeing all aspects of its operations. Consolidation was made possible by a mutual cooperation between the school and governing the town and schools governing bodies. Its management structure and working personnel positions were drafted by an independent third-party consultant specializing in municipal reorganizations. The mission of the department is to be fiscally responsible of all town's taxpaying assets, including buildings, land, public areas, cemeteries, and roadways. Public safety, daily maintenance, long-term forecasting are always.
This is what they're doing now?
Yep. So what we have with this budget, we'll speak a little bit about the department first before I jump into the operating budget. So with this, we also created a few new positions. We had, on the school side, we had a groundskeeper that was a school department employee. Upon, that person left for a different job, and that was about the time these departments were merging. So we created this position under the DPW. So this new position was Fields and Grounds Specialist. We filled that in the summer, worked, got a very good employee who's in that position now, and in off-seasons like this, is actually working with the DPW 40 hours a week, as there's not much on the ground side to do. So that has worked out well, has given us additional person on the DPW side. Also through this, we have created a maintenance position in the town, where before the town employed for the public buildings, two full-time custodians who kind of did a combination of custodial and maintenance work. When I came onboard, I saw a need for a dedicated maintenance person, so that job was posted, was filled, and it was actually filled through an evaluation that the second shift custodian was the best qualified candidate. So Paul Finley, who was the second shift custodian, actually just last week, started as our maintenance person for the town now. And then we filled the second shift by his becoming a maintenance person, that created an opening on the custodial side. Through interviews, we filled that with a person who was doing part-time custodial work for us, who a lot of people in town are familiar with, and were very pleased with her work. So that was a win-win there. So we're working on those schedules to now, because it kind of creates more dedicated custodial work on the town buildings, which is a plus for the buildings. So they can now, between not having to jump on maintenance work and custodial work, they're dedicated custodians. So we're working on their schedules, how they're going to be divided up between all the buildings, library, town hall, fire stations, police station, EMS, and council and aging. So we're working there, and the maintenance person will also be cross-trained in these schools with the two maintenance personnel there who are going to be coming under the DPW as well. So I want people that maybe not know, especially like with the new elementary school coming online, you really need a building operator for that building with the technology that's in it. So the, we will have a dedicated maintenance person there, but however, through the trainings, I am also going to have the other two maintenance people there as well. So if there ever is an emergency, they have at least the basics of the building. And if, you know, with three people, if there's a job that requires a couple people, just gives us more hands, we can always grab from the DPW as well. So those are, those are the changes that we've made personnel-wise. And John and I work together every day. I have actually relocated my office out of the school's central administration building. I now operate out of town hall here on the first floor. So John and I work together every day, and it's kind of a cross-training of each other's jobs as well. So we're getting, John and I work great together. So through your foresight, I thank you for the creation of this department, and I think it's a win-win for the town.
Excellent. Questions from the Board of Selectmen?
I love the idea of this combining, you know, these two departments together. When I first came onboard, I just thought it was a great idea. But as a quick assessment from you, would you say it's an A+, a B-, is there room for improvement, or would you say this?
Absolutely. I mean, there's always room for improvement, and we'll continually strive to do that. But I think through, through the merger, John and I are kind of feeling it out, but we're, I'd give us a B+, A-, there's definitely room for improvement, and we'll continue to improve. And one thing we're going to be improving on is how, just formalizing everything, we're actually purchased through grants as well, software package, which, they've done the assessment of the buildings, it's a third-party assessment. They came in and looked at every town building, town hall, everyone's schools, and what they did is they looked at the building envelope, they've looked at the operating infrastructures, they documented all that data. They are now formulating that data, and that is going to be presented us, to us. And what we can do, we can work that into a, it's formulated into a 20-year capital plan, and also a annual, quarterly, monthly, and weekly maintenance plan. So we're going to be introducing software. It's going to take a little time. John and I are starting to see training on it now, but if someone has, needs a repair made, it'll all be done on computer now, instead of via, I still do paper systems in the schools. I think the town does kind of word of mouth, but we'll be able to document everything, which is huge. And like when we built the elementary school, the MSBA requested documentation from us on what we've done for maintenance. So it just helps us track everything. And, you know, it's nice to have people that can remember, but those people leave. So we're going to actually have everything in software that'll be documented, it just makes everything much more standardized.
Efficiency is the future, so it sounds like the program of fame is working. I'm glad to hear it. Thanks, Mark.
And also, Board of Selectmen? Mr. Townsend?
I just, just a comment. I think the, it sounds to me like combining the two departments together has been a great thing for the town, and I think the software you speak of is going to be really beneficial as we go forward, because you're right, people do leave, and we need that history. So just a comment, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for doing over.
You're welcome. It's going to be good, all our model numbers, serial numbers, things of that, that historical data. If we have a problem, you know, something that, hey, to look back on the history, this is the last three years has been problematic. We need to address this, we need to do things. And preventive maintenance is what we really want to implement as well. And that's going to help us maximize getting the most we can out of the buildings and their operating systems.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And is this the same software that will also tell you when it's time to do something?
Correct, yes.
Other questions? Either board?
Just a quick question. How are you doing on the sharing of equipment, working out well? I know.
It's working out well. We've, and actually, we're purchasing some new equipment, but I am also going to be, once we purchase some new stuff, we're going to actually be reducing the amount of equipment we have, because through the combination, all of a sudden, we have an overlap, where the departments worked together before, but we kind of had a duplicate of equipment, where now all the personnel are under one department. It's easier to, it's not looked at as school property, it's not looked at as town property. It's overseen by us, and it's all-town property. So we can prioritize better, all the equipment is available. So I'm actually going to be purging five pieces of equipment at the schools that I don't need between mowers. between mowers, small front-end loaders, snow equipment. There's going to be a purchase through capital of some new stuff to maximize our efficiency. But like I say, we're going to be able to get rid of some older equipment and actually the number of equipment we have is going to go down, not increase.
That's great. I think that was one of the main goals, just to look for economies of scale.
I have just a small question.
Yes.
You said you're going to-
Can I bring the microphone a little closer?
Sorry. You're going to add someone to the payroll for the new school that's well-versed in the technologies? You're going to bring somebody from within?
No, it'll be someone from within. So we'll have three maintenance people town-wide. One will stay at the high school where he's based out of now, one will stay at the elementary school, one will be based out of the town. So who's presently at the elementary school will remain there. That doesn't mean they're tied there, but he'll have the most working knowledge of that building just because he'll spend more time there. But with the level of sophistication that these new buildings bring, you find they actually need building operators. Everything is run off-
I agree, I agree. Now is that going to require more education for him? So we need to send him to school or?
Probably not. We'll see what the baseline, they're required, the general contractor and the subs are required to give us baseline training. As far as the building management system-
I'm thinking more of HVAC and the technology that goes along with all of that.
So once we get a feel for, you know, how the baseline is going, and that's the, the good thing about having someone kind of dedicated to that building is obviously the more time you have to spend on the system, the more familiar you become with it. It's hard to go into a system that you haven't, you know, it's been running fine for, especially the first year. The contractors own everything, so we really don't have to do anything there the first year. But that's kind of a good time to get in there and look at things and learn it. And ask questions while you have them at no cost.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of additional comments. You know, as you know, the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee, you know, jointly went down this road at the recommendation of the Superintendent and myself, with the support of Dave Seigantoff and John Woods. And I have to say, it's been, it's been exciting to watch the two of you work together because they've both been doing a phenomenal job trying to figure out how to work better together, not that they weren't working good before, but how to work better together as a team. And, you know, both Dave and John, they came up with, as you said, some equipment reductions, you know, and also, you know, some new pieces of equipment they needed, that they needed to be able to do their, their job better. Short story is that they used to have four SKAGs, which are small riding lawnmowers. Now what they're doing is we're now going forward to the school project to buy one that's twelve feet wide?
Sixteen.
Sixteen feet wide, even better. So that on one patch, you're getting sixteen feet versus four feet, or you know, four and a half feet, whatever it is. So through things like that, that they said, you know, when we combined them, we now have all of these fields. We couldn't justify a sixteen-foot mower before for just a school or the town, but together we can. And that helps us recycle equipment. So there's been a lot of work there and I'm really looking forward to this new software coming online, this facility software. It's really going to help protect the town in the long run. And that was one of the requirements that, you know, town meeting, you know, for giving the faith that they have in us to fund the multiple building projects was that the town wanted to make sure whatever investment it made is going to be preserved in the long term. So we have converted from the standpoint of a reactive department because there wasn't the right funds that were given before to now a proactive operation and maintenance department to be ahead of the curve, to, you know, have our facilities last longer than they probably should. And that's really a testament to trying to, you know, figure out how we can be more frugal with the taxpayer dollars and make sure that our stuff lasts longer. So we're not in, you know, a major building boom like we are right now in thirty years. These things will last for fifty-plus years. So just with that, I just, it's been great to see these two coming together and they've both been doing a phenomenal job on putting this together and really good teamwork.
John, did you have anything you wanted to add to the?
No, just like Dave said, we've worked very well together before this merger. And I had no doubts that we'd be fine when the merger happened and it has been, it has been fine. I've been learning a lot from Dave. Hopefully he's been learning a little bit from me. And yeah, I just think moving forward, it's going to be good. Like you talked about the software, if I'm not mistaken, it basically will punch out a ticket every day to let you know what maintenance needs to be done and that can be handed off to the custodians of the maintenance department. But yeah, so far, so good. I say an A+.
Now, it's just great to hear because again, I think between the Board of Selectmen and the schools, we approached it with a little trepidation, concern as to whether it would work and to hear you say that it's working almost exceeding our expectations so quickly is great. And again, this idea of consolidating departments and seeing the economies of scale and the increased efficiencies, you know, it's just great. But it takes good people to make it work. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
And I will just add that we have an excellent crew that makes me and Dave shine. So thank you to our crew also.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Just on the, do you want to go over the changes from last year's budget?
Oh, sure.
And so, and I may have to refer to John for this because this is my first six months with this budget. So the discrepancies from FY18 to FY19 were in the salaries line because I said as we opened up a maintenance position, so that was the addition. Custodian came from second shift custodian into maintenance and then we moved outside as a custodian. Also, we filled the ground specialist position. That was funded under the DPW. Now that used to be under the school item. The equipment repair and maintenance line item was increased. Just to cover the costs of services that increase every year, unfortunately. There's also a stormwater management that used to be, I believe, I was told, paid out of a different account. So what we're doing, we're trying to break down line items for more transparency. Helps us track where money's being spent exactly and makes it easier for everyone to understand as well versus one kind of generic number. So we're working on trying to get those more properly listed, I should say. Now on the school side, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong. School budgetary items are going to stay in the school tracking because those numbers are tied to DESI. DESI tracks those numbers as I referenced before where when they came and when we went to MSBA for the school project, we needed to provide them, I believe it was a minimum of ten years of history of what was spent. And they tracked that by their DESI numbers. So I believe those are earmarked, so we-
Sure. So those are, both the school and the town went forward with their budgets as usual. And so those positions are budgeted in the school budget and everything that Dave and John just mentioned. What is in the process of being worked on with both Meg and with the school business manager Brad is trying to pull those out in the future so that they can be consolidated. Our intent is at some point to consolidate them while still addressing the DESI number. But that mechanism, we weren't going to be ready for, for this budget presentation. But for all intents and purposes is that after the budget's done, then Meg and Brad kind of transfer those into one category.
And it's not problematic for me as far as where they get charged, just different numbers. So it's not an issue.
Any questions on the finances?
Just, just one. The fifteen thousand dollars on the stormwater management, I think you said that that transferred from another account. Is there a corresponding decrease somewhere?
In the past, it was funded, it was twenty-five thousand dollars. This year it's only fifteen because that's what the engineering company expects to, the cost for this year for the stormwater management.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
It's in a line item by-
So as Meg just told me, it was an article before and now we're funding it through the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So if there's nothing else, again, thank you, gentlemen, and thanks for a great job.
Thank you very much for your support.
We will move now to planning environmental permitting.
So some of you haven't met Stephen Cole. Stephen is our new planning director. He was hired right, he was hired before Thanksgiving, but started right after Thanksgiving. And Stephen brings a wealth of knowledge, not only in planning, but more focused also in economic development. And he's a great match for the community. He also has a strong finance background as well. And as we move forward with the Route 44 Development Project and other initiatives in town, Stephen's turned out to be a great fit. He's working with the department, which again has been a consolidated department, and is looking to see, you know, and trying to get everybody to work together and move the responsibility to the department forward. So with that, we're very happy to have Stephen. And Stephen, you're up.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate if you set the bar lower next time.
And so Stephen, now you're up.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the board for allowing me to visit you this evening to present the Planning Department's fiscal year nineteen budget proposal and hello to the members of the Finance Committee. Having been in the role as Director for only a short time during this budget season, I was most intent on understanding the operations of the consolidated departments as well as our most pressing obligations as defined by statute or prescribed by legal mandate and the status of pending and ongoing projects. The department is requesting an increase in our expense accounts in order to ensure the department's functions remain responsive to community needs, customer requests, and the conditions on the ground during development. This request restores the funds removed from the department's budget during the fiscal year seventeen to eighteen transition. Salary line item has increased seven point zero eight percent in this department's request, reflected as a seven point three five percent increase in the town administrator's recommendation. This appears to be consistent with the proposed cost of living increases as well as adding new staff to the department payroll. This proposal represents a seven point nine eight percent increase overall in the department's budget from last fiscal year. As the department's newest staff member, it gives me great pleasure to say I have enjoyed working with this accomplished, seasoned, committed, insightful, resourceful, and very hard-working staff in the Planning, Environmental, and Permitting Department. As I prepared this budget and I looked over some of the metrics indicative of performance, I observed a noticeable trend that's noteworthy this evening. Not the least of which is that the number and value of our permits is increasing year to year. One hundred eleven new construction permits were issued in 2017 with a total value of eight million dollars. Overall, with additions and alterations, total of fifteen point one million dollars in permits in value. The elementary school was issued in November 2016. The estimated construction cost for the permit is thirty-seven point six. When bifurcated from the rest of the twenty-six permits, the adjusted twenty-six permits are valued at eleven point five million. Year-to-year, this represents a thirty-one and a half percent increase in adjusted value. A two-year comparison shows a seventy-eight percent increase in 2017 values from 2015. This to me is a testament to not only the ladies and land use, but also the competent management of our agents and commissioners. And it's also testament, I believe, to the strength of our community. Our residents are investing in their homes and their properties and we're attracting at least eight million dollars worth of new construction just in the last fiscal year alone. Some of the department's initiatives in the upcoming fiscal year are centered around improving customer service, but I stress, it's not because we need to. It's frankly because we are here to serve and I am committed to continuously improving the services we provide to our customers. Frankly, to improve the customers' experiences to also improve the staff's experience. Michael mentioned that I have some fiscal background. Having served in other communities, it's incumbent upon me to also mention, I take budget, the budget very seriously. This is the policy statement of our community and if not the policy statement of our department. And what we're trying to achieve should be in some ways reflective of what those policies that we're all trying to work toward. So in that vein, we're going to undertake initiatives to streamline our processes and reduce costs by migrating away from a time and paper-intensive method by enhancing the department's capacity to receive and process payments for applications online. We're also going to strive to streamline the e-permitting process and inspections so that they can be conducted in the field, processed, and reported in real time from the field. Michael mentioned that the Route 44 project and the urban renewal plan is likely to command more of our attention. More on that later, I'm sure. Something else that I bring to this position though, as Michael mentioned, is an economic development perspective. I think it's important for us to spend some time working on our ways to promote our community's events and cultural assets in the Planning, Environmental, and Permitting Department. With a focus on what I have sometimes referred to as an asset-based community development, we use what we have to activate spaces, whether for recreation or perhaps pop-up commercial opportunities where suitable. And this includes preserving and protecting the community's cultural and natural environment. That is why we're moving ahead with creating our MVP Plan, a state initiative, Municipal Vulnerability. Again, more on that later, but ultimately it's a strategy that's going to secure for us additional funds or additional points when we pursue other funds from the state. The intention is of course to make certain that we are prepared for whatever vulnerable things that we might experience or identify about ourselves. And frankly, it's also our intention to aggressively pursue grants to support our efforts. We must do more with less, that's understood, but there's plenty of funding opportunities out there to support our efforts. And I think that if we were to perhaps have a comprehensive strategy with our internal colleagues as well as our regional partners, slinging those arrows so to speak becomes a little bit easier when we speak with a voice and a goal. So as we ready ourselves for the new calendar and fiscal year in the Planning and Environmental and Permitting Department, I'm looking forward to working with my colleagues in the Town of Carver, this most august board, our Finance Committee, and our regional partners to achieve our community's goals and position ourselves for responsible and meaningful growth. Thank you.
A couple of questions. Looking at the elected official salary, it jumps from five thousand to twelve-five?
Seeing as the department has since been consolidated, several different functions now operate under one. As you may have heard, our CFO mentioned, we are consolidating some of those line items as well. It's not an increase in the budget, it's simply a consolidation of the stipends I include our-
Well, I mean, it indicates salary, which would imply that that's what the planning board members are receiving, a jump from five thousand to twelve-five.
Are you looking at the master payroll budget or the actual?
Meg, can you use the microphone?
On the master payroll budget, that most likely, that was probably my fault because I did do the planning board. But if you look at the actual budget for elected salaries and 2017 actual, eight thousand five hundred fifty was paid out. In 2018, original budget, eleven thousand three hundred was budgeted, and then this is twelve thousand five hundred. So only an increase of twelve hundred dollars. And the reason why only eight thousand five hundred fifty was paid out in 2017 is not all elected board members submit their paperwork to be paid.
How many members are there of the planning board?
But this is, this is planning, but it's planning, zoning- redevelopment.
Oh, okay. So it really shouldn't say elected then because it's only boards appointed, but they get a stipend and so forth. All right. So it's collective salaries of the boards.
Yes.
Okay, collective boards, okay. And then the department had itself from seventy-four to ninety-one?
Sure. No, absolutely. When Stephen was hired, Stephen had a wealth of experience. So his, this is the pay scale that he was hired at, the step that he was hired at, compared to his predecessor, which was at a lower step. So it's based upon experience. When we bring somebody onboard, we put them at the appropriate level of their experience within the salary charts.
Other questions from the Board of Selectmen? Finance Committee?
I guess I'm trying to get, understand, you talked about some increases in the consolidated budget now compared to, what, three or four years ago, when we consolidated all these entities to try to save money. I guess what was happening and what services weren't being provided at the town that you thought that we needed to go back and reinstate some salaries or?
We made an error. In last year's budget, there was an item that we underfunded and really we used other funds to pay for that mid-year that we, by transferring some funds. So this really is trying to get back at what the budget should have been last year. So I think that was, Stephen, was it fifteen thousand?
It was five thousand for the expense accounts and then there was the salary adjustments for new staff.
So that was really, that five thousand dollars was in the original request from two years ago and somehow in the iterations going from the original request to what was voted at town meeting, five thousand dollars was lost. So that was added back in this year, plus the adjusted salary for the director.
But were the issues with the service that people were generally getting from the consolidated department?
Sorry, I don't understand.
Meaning, I guess- Meaning, I guess, I guess this reorg that happened was to provide the same level of service before we had some cuts. And now this, this budget now, were there any issues or problems, I guess, that you were trying to correct with this, with this budget? Any?
Only the scribner's error for the $5,000. Other than that, it's providing the same level of service that was previously presented, and then Stephen will be reevaluating that this year as he puts the whole year into it.
Any other question that had to do with way back when we had problems with how we were, I guess, compensating for permits and inspections? How's that working now?
So in the past, the inspectors received a portion of the fee, and if it was a big solar project with millions of dollars invested, they would get this big number. What we did, excuse me, I think it was four years ago, the Board of Selectmen went to a salary-based fee, and that's what's built into the, into the budget right now, so it's a, everyone gets a weekly stipend, excuse me, for doing the work, no matter how many permits they do or don't do. It ebbs and flows over the season, but we take a constant rate.
And that's working?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you. Okay, with the Town Administrator's permission, we'll go to the North Carver Water District.[688.62][688.62](Laughter).
Karen, would you just follow what Kevin was doing, so we don't have to?[695.32][695.32](Laughter).
If you could give us your name and title, sir?
My name is Kevin Tracy, and I am the Chairman of the North Carver Water District Commission. I just want to check, are we all on the same page with the budget, because I know Michael had maybe wanted to make some adjustments?
Yeah, we're still going back.
Okay, okay. Do they have a copy of this?
I'm missing something here, as usual.
I don't know with this one. I don't have a prepared statement. You know, I think we should just kind of dive into the numbers, I mean, if everybody's kind of onto it. Again, betterments are what they are, that's a, that's a schedule of descending value, but, you know, it is what it is. Water use charges, everybody's best guess about what's going to happen, you know, without, without the dekis revenue, now that that's gone, it's just kind of our best guesses to what we're going to have for water revenues. IRS subsidy, again, tied to, tied to, as a reimbursement on one of our loans, we get, we get a subsidy from the federal government. The good news in all of this is that the DIF numbers and the pilot and the DIF, those numbers are increasing by multiple percentages every year, and I think that's, I think that's a, that reflects on the type of development that's been happening up in, up there in the district. Stephen Cole's comments about, about new permits and new development, it really is happening up there, and the DIF number is really what's going to probably pull us all out of this.
Like, for everyone's unification, is that in the North Carver area, within a certain geographical area, any development that happens in there, the new growth that occurs when that gets taxed, half of it goes to the North Carver Water District, and half of it comes to the Town Coffers. And the purpose for that is the North Carver Water District was designed to spur economic development, and that was designed as one of the funding mechanisms, so that they would benefit in the development that they were helping to create. And that's called a district improvement financing.
Correct. Correct. And Meg had put, put together a forecast for us, and the commission looked it over, and we made some minor adjustments to it.[852.12][852.12](Phone ringing). You can see Meg's numbers on the left, and the district's final request on the right-hand side. We made some adjustments. A lot of the adjustments were, you know, I kind of took a look at what we'd been spending our money on for the last three years, and, you know, we looked at some areas where maybe we didn't really need as much. So you'll see some, you'll see some, some take back on that. Two areas, one in particular, the well repair, and we've, we've got that called out. Well number one has been very troublesome. It's a, it's nothing short of a maintenance headache. Lot of iron and manganese, and it tends to eat whatever it touches. So it's just, it's just kind of a messy well. The long-term solution for that is new source approval, which can be time-consuming and expensive, so.
What, can you define new source approval?
New source approval, new wells.
New wells.
For all intents and purposes, you know, expand the well fields, whether it means multiple wells, drawing smaller amounts, that's called a manifold system, whether it means putting a new, a new larger well. We just don't know that. Again, that's, that's kind of where some of the expense might come in, is that, you know, it's, it's in the ground, you just don't know what's there. So, you know, we'll, we'll pick away at that, you know, as, as development happens, perhaps we might also be able to partner with some of the developers. They're going to need the water, we need new source approval. If we can partner with them, it might be a potential funding source for those kinds of issues, so.
So on that, just, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Kevin yet today, is the Route 44 Development Group was in today, meeting with Stephen Cole and I, and also followed up a meeting with the, the Redevelopment Authority, and we went a little bit over all the different utilities, and they recognized that as part of their expansion, they may have to assist in with the North Carver Water District. They're currently working with the district's engineer, and I believe, meeting with you guys next week?
We are meeting next week.
Next week, to continue the discussion. So what we did do is, at a previous meeting with the North Carver Water District, until we determined what happens with the Route 44 development, we really didn't have the excess revenue to spend on any new source approval or any expansion until we know what the need is. One of the items that the Route 44 has said is that, within the existing 100,000-gallon capacity, they may be able to design a system that, that can use that capacity that's not being utilized and, and feed their entire complex. So that's something that we have to take a look into. But, you know, one of the things, it's a takeaway that I just want to mention, is that the water they're pulling out, as Kevin said, is high in manganese, higher in iron. As a result of that, the equipment that's there, the pumps and so forth, just do not last as long. So where a pump, we would normally get three years out of it, we're replacing it annually. Every time you replace a pump, you got to bring a crane in there to pull the thing. Then, because you're doing that too, then you get into fracking, so you can reopen what's happening. So our operational costs for this facility are significant compared to what a normal well field would be.
Okay. Agreed. The generator, again, that's, that's long been understood as an issue. I know Mr. Cole had, had submitted a potential grant application. I don't know what the, that's, the outcome on that is still pending. What I'm told is that the generator that we own actually has a significant amount of value, so if, if we can find a grant partner to help us, you know, resize our generator, we actually might come out on the plus side with this one. I, you know, again, it's, it's not determined until we, you know, do all the, all the things that need to happen, but, you know, the generator that there has some value to somebody, it's just a little bit too large for our requirements. One of the wild cards this year is, we need to, we need to go out for an RFP for water operator. This is a contract year for them. We're hoping that we can create some economy of scale in that the, the new water operator will also be operating the, the systems over in, in the schools. So there's some, there's some increased workload for them. It may actually create an economy of scale for the North Carver Water District. So, again, we don't know how that works out until the RFP process is completed. And other than that, some, just some minor changes to legal lines and those types of things, just, it's just everyday, ordinary business.
The, do you want to explain the plan if the 44 Development Project goes in in order to try to retire the debt that's currently associated with the North Carver Water District?
Go right ahead.[1201.12][1201.12](Laughter). More than happy to.
Okay, can I just, early reminder to the Board, evaluations for the Town Administrator are due on March 1st?[1212.33][1212.33](Laughter).
So, so a couple things, that with the Route 44 development, when that, as I mentioned before, the DIF, the district improvement financing, if, when that property is redeveloped, there's going to be some taxable asset, and that taxable asset's going to be paying some amount of property taxes. And those property taxes, as I mentioned before, half go into retiring the debt for the North Carver Water District. Now, keep in mind that some of that debt is 40-year debt, because it's done through US.
USDA.
DA. So you can't pay off that early, but you can put a reserve in to make those payments and put that in, so it'll compound in interest, and you'll be able to make those payments. You know, there are going to have to be some upgrades that are done to the facility, just to maintain the pumps. It may make sense to try to find another location to put some of the wells, so you can get cleaner water, but it's, it's like Russian roulette sometimes, you don't know if you're going to hit the, the good water or not until you actually go down, even with a test well.
No guarantees.
So, you know, that's part of the risk that's there. But with the Route 44 development, we anticipate that that will be able to help stabilize this debt. Now, what has happened with this project is, is I want to point out two issues. One is that the, the engineering firm that designed the project, who I will mention no longer works for the town, didn't necessarily do a good job with some of the elements of the, the site, such as the generator is sized to power, I don't want to say a small city, but a small city.
Yeah.
And as a result, it doesn't run at capacity, and, because you don't have the drawl on it, and the generator has to be properly sized, so you can keep the magnets going and keep the drawl that's in there. In addition, it's, it's so big that the propane that would, that gasifies in there can't gasify fast enough, from liquid to, to air, to, to vapor, to, to burn. So we have some issues there. In any case, we have many design issues that we constantly work through that we're trying to fix. And I think the second thing is that the project, when it was done, not only, I think, came in a little bit over budget, but also the betterment fees, basically a third of the debt approximately.
Approximately.
That was going to be paid for was, in essence, waived by a prior board, and when they did that, the town is still obligated for the debt, so in essence, you just relieved a third of the ratepayers from paying. Whether it's the right reason or the wrong reason, I'm not here to argue that, I'm just pointing out that that then transferred the debt from the district to the town. So we have programmed about a quarter, $250,000 into our free cash article, through our capital article, to subsidize the North Carver Water District. We know we need to do that for the foreseeable future, and in essence, that is more or less paying some of the debt service on the project. The district is making enough money to cover its operating costs, even with all these extra pumps, but the debt services where they, they run into a hole, and it's the town's obligation to pay those. So what I have done is, you see the budget on the right, which is the request of the district, which has $216,474 in there, is what they're requesting the town to put in there. I'm actually putting in $250,000. I don't necessarily plan on spending more than the 216, but I'm using, proposing using the delta as a contingency. And I say that because all of a sudden, if, if an extra pump goes down that we can't pay for, then, without having a contingency in this utility budget, that would technically mean we'd have to call a special town meeting, because the district can't draw money out, nor can they technically do it from the Finance Committee, because it's a separate governmental body, and the Water District is a separate governmental body. So, you know, if we don't have to use that additional $34,000, $33,000, great, but just being safe, it makes a whole lot of sense to put that in there. So that's, that's really the only difference that I have from there, and I wanted to just give a little context for, you know, some newer people that may not be familiar with the Water District, and you may say, well, why are we subsidizing? Well, there's the reasons why we're subsidizing. But the Board has been, you know, really aggressive trying to, to manage its, its funding, and, and where possible, to grow the district. We have, the district actually also moved forward this year, and I'm going to let Kevin talk about that a little bit, they actually added on a new revenue income stream with the fire?
Yes, we did. There's been, for some of the larger projects, fire suppression is really important, and without, without a standpipe, if we, if we had a standpipe or a water tower, fire suppression would just be available everywhere, that, that goes with that. And hopefully, Route 44 Development comes through with their promise of a, of a standpipe. That, that benefits everybody. But on a limited basis, fire suppression can be, can be achieved in smaller locations with things like booster pumps and, 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 basically, it's a, it's a plumbing trick. We actually, we can, we can, we have, we have a, a line in our, in our rules and regulations now, charging a fee for, for fire suppression. Now, it's a, it's, it's a significant fee for, for a smaller business, but for larger businesses that, that need a limited fire suppression capacity, it's, it's part of their cost of doing business, and, and we have added that to our revenue stream.
And that included doing a line extension that went past the North Carver Fire Station?
It did.
And where did it start?
Lake and Ham, the end of Lake and Ham Drive to now, we reach all the way out to 58 in front of the fire station, so.
So that was built privately, and they, in essence, extended the water line for the district, so now, if anyone needs to tap into that, there's already a line out front, you got to pay your connection fee, but at least the water line is now in a larger area.
Gets us a little bit farther down the road.
And I want to talk about something in more detail later, but there's another lot, another line extension that's happening right now.
Yes, there is. That, that's going to be, that's going to be extending from, from where Braddock Way is, and everybody's seen that the church on the Lake and Ham Green is being rehabilitated. They're putting in five, two-bedroom units, and they're going to be extending the water line, and again, taking advantage of the fire suppression part of our rules and regulations. So, again, added revenue.
And the town, which I'll talk about later, is going to have to extend that a few hundred feet further, tied into the North Carver landfill, but in essence, if that project wasn't done, we would have had to make that connection on our own.
Pay the whole freight.
And now, because of some DEP issues, we need to do a further extension, but that just helps the whole process.
It does.
And then it makes more connections that are available.
Right.
To sell water.
Questions?
Questions on the overall budget, just three things that kind of jump out at me. The betterment interest that you've got sitting up here is revenue coming in. I guess I'm not sure what makes that up. I'm looking at the current financials, we've got about $1,000 in through December, so does that come at the end of the year, or is that something that?
The betterments aren't apportioned onto the tax bills until we get the actual tax bills, they don't appear in the preliminary bills, so through December 31st, you would see almost nothing.
So the $60,000 is a good number, you think?
Yes. Well, that, that was from, that was pulled from our MMS report as to what would be committed for the fall, for fiscal 19.
Great.[1725.12][1725.12](Laughter). Another question they has on the electric line item, it looks like you're budgeting $27,000, but we're at 25 through December of this year, and you had to budget 50 last year in 18, so I would think we're going to be at 50 again. My question is, is that 27,000 too light, that you've got in the current year budget?
Okay, so electric is, is made up of a couple of, of a couple of different things. You know that we're running off of the solar panels on Route 44. It's, it's, it's not just an expense line, it's also somewhat a revenue line. We get credit from Eversource every, every time the sun shines, you know, we, we also get credit for that. So at the end of the year, everything does tend to balance out.
Okay, so you're comfortable with your 27,000 dollar number?
Just on that, John, you know, we, we do have the two solar projects down in North Carver, we also have another solar project that we get power from across the street, and we also have another agreement where we receive revenue outside of town. So our solar take is somewhat complicated. So our solar take is somewhat complicated in here, but as Kevin says, there are some reduced revenue that comes in with here to do that. And that's one of the things that we're going to work on this fall is, I'm sorry, spring, is to really try to better articulate and show how the do-tos, the do-froms, the credits, the, you know, transfer back and forth, because we really haven't put all of that on one sheet of paper. We deal with it on a spot basis, and now with the expanded finance department, we're going to look at that this year.
So any net meeting credits, they don't, they won't show up in the North Carver Water District's?
Sometimes our net meeting credits are applied to the town. And then we move money back to the North Carver Water District because they're giving us a credit because they can't use all their credits.
Gotcha. And the last question was on the professional services budget. Again, you're keeping it flat as last year, $128,000, but you're at 90 right now through December. Unless there's some unusual items in there, or it looks like you're going to, based on your current run rate, you're going to go over the budget for this year.
Okay, I'll have to take.
I don't play on the spot, but if you want to look at it again and just see.
I'll take another look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
And do you think the RFP for the new water operator, you'll have a better idea for the 2019 budget? Or is that going to happen probably after the budgets are finalized?
The new contract that we have with our current water operator expires at the end of the fiscal year. So we'll have to have something ready to go by July 1st.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
Seems like an obvious question, but the.
Want to grab the mic, Bill?
It seemed like an obvious question, but the pumping equipment, is there different material? I mean, I'm thinking stainless steel, something that's not going to deteriorate as fast, or?
We've tried a lot of different things. It's possible that there's the latest and greatest out there, but my water operator is very savvy. He's really up on what goes on when down the hole. He pretty much knows what's going on. You know, his recommendation is, you know, his recommendation really is, for all intents and purposes, new source approval. We just can't get there yet. The water that we pull out is, it's just nasty. There's no other way to describe it, it's just nasty.
It's clean, from an environmental standpoint.
Unprofitable.
It's just not clear. It's not clear.
Exactly.
There's a reason Carver was a source of cannonballs during the Revolutionary War.
Yeah.
And it's tied to the iron and manganese that were so rich in.
And again, there's no guarantee that you could sink a new well and find water that's any better. And that's where the expense comes in. You might, but you just don't know until you do it where.
And I got a shallow well at my house and.
Yeah.
Neighbor across the street went down 200 feet and set the same kind of water.
Exactly. So, yep.
Okay.
Yes, sir, the chair. I get the same kind of water because we all live in the same town. So I just did my whole house in pecks, which after the copper, I'll let go. But what's our liability on the houses that are buying water from the town? And five years from now, their boiler disintegrates because the quality of the water is so bad.
Once it leaves the plant, it's perfect.
Oh, we treat it.
Once it leaves the plant, it's perfect. It's just the raw water that's bad.
I see.
We take all the iron and manganese out.
Can I run a hose down?
You know, once it leaves the plant, it's perfect.
That was my question.
No liability then.
This Water District thing has me at a loss.
Once it leaves the plant, it's perfect.
Okay.
And for those that may not have been around when we voted on this at town meeting, we were assured that we already had the folks lined up that were going, so that we wouldn't have to pay for, you know, anything down the road. Now.
Again, that's not how it happened, but if you look at the pilot and the DIF numbers, every year they're getting, they're moving up.
Right, we're moving in the right direction.
So it's working. We did everything right for the right reasons. It just didn't work out like we planned.
Right.
It was still a good idea.
There was a major recession tied in this as well.
It was still a good idea, and it's going to work.
Well, just in case anyone was wondering why we went ahead with this, knowing we were.
It's just going to take longer than we anticipated.
Right. Well, again, the 44 development project would go a long way towards.
That's, that will really help.
Mr. Duggan.
How is the water treated after it's, you know, out of the ground? How do you treat that? I mean, just like the normal house?
No, it's a lot more sophisticated than that. We use a series of membranes to filter out all of the particulate matter. It's pretty sophisticated.
I see a road trip in the future.
The water treatment plant, it's awesome. Everybody should tour the water treatment facility because it's beautiful.
Yeah.
It really is.
Maybe we could charge.
Don't have to get out of Lowe's.
For the tours and pick up a little additional revenue.
Is that an invite?
Absolutely.
Don't have to get out of Lowe's for the bag of iron salts.
Make contact with the water operator, Mike Woolam. He'll be glad to take you through it. He's a water geek. He really is.
He's good, he's good, too.
Getting there.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Kevin, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry, you had one more, Bill?
Is the generator being replaced, or you said it's too big?
We hope to replace it. Again, we need to partner with somebody. If we can find a grant that helps us do the transition, we would like to replace the generator.
And the old generator is still okay, you said it's just too large?
It still works as long as the weather's not cold.
Any place, any point.
It still works as long as the weather's not cold.
That's what I look for in a generator.
Exactly.
Same way, it can work.
So, Bill, the answer is, we looked at that. So when we were building the new school across the street, I said, "Hey, I got a generator, let's move it in." Well, then they told me I'd have to build three more schools and then it would work.
Yeah, it's even big for that.
It's big.
Yeah.
Neighborhood around for backup.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's also propane, and it's very difficult to get the amount of capacity in this climate through there. And when the generator normally breaks down, it's because of a snowstorm that's knocked down the trees with 20-degree weather, and the liquid just doesn't gasify fast enough in them. So there's a whole bunch of issues with that. Again, it goes back to an engineer that no longer has workforce anymore.
Get in touch with American Pickers, maybe they'll.
We'll find somebody, we'll fix it at some point.
All right, it's on the list. Kevin, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And now, we will go to the library COA Director.
She wants to be named.
Please identify.
Questions, Meg just left.
Please identify yourself and your title.
Yeah, I'm Carol Julius, I'm the Library Director and Council on Aging Director. Do you want to do Council on Aging first?
It's your choice.
We'll go in alphabetical order.
This is your day, whatever, whichever way you'd like to, it's your day.
This was my day, I don't know how this, how it would work out. So at the Council on Aging, things from a staffing point of view are going really well. We currently have all our positions filled, and we have a really, really good staff right now. Dawn Padavani has been the cook for just over a year and a half. And this past year, we hired June Benson to assist her in the kitchen and do some other clerical-type things. And June is great, she's very reliable, she's a hard worker, and we've been really lucky with that. Connie Kelly works at the Council on Aging now, and she also works at the library. This has been a really good split for her, and she does activities and just is awesome. She's got energy and she's really artistic, so she's been able to do some new and a little bit more intensive, you know, arts and crafts with the seniors that have been really well received. And then, of course, we still have Judy Murphy as our outreach worker. Judy's a rock. Roger Kilalea is still in GATRA, and Peggy Wood now fills in and helps with that. So Roger is sort of semi-retired now, and Peggy does the extra days, and that's been good. And we have great drivers. We just had a meeting with them last week, and they're doing really well. I still could use one more substitute, but the, I'm not looking at you, Dave, no.
Since you have a bit of an audience, do you want to explain exactly what the duties of the driver is?
Sure, GATRA drivers, they generally work two days a week from about 7:30 in the morning till 4:30, 5 o'clock, depending on when their last drop-off is. We transport seniors and disabled young adults and adults from Carver to the surrounding communities for doctor's visits, hospital visits, some people go to the gym. We transport for shopping trips, pretty much anything that anybody that qualifies for a ride is a place that we go to, we take them. And like I said, our drivers are great. I don't, I get compliments, I don't get complaints, so I feel very fortunate. We do have some challenges with regards to that building. As I'm sure you're aware, we had, when that cold snap hit right after Christmas, the pipes in our basement froze under the nutrition center part of the building, and so we were without running water for about a week and a half. And because of the way the holidays fell, and then we had that snowstorm, we were actually only closed to the public for, I think, three days, even though it covered a two-week period. And we were still able to get Meals on Wheels out during that time, but we weren't able to do congregate meals because without running water, of course, we couldn't do dishes and those kinds of things. So that was definitely a challenge, and that has been fixed. And Dave and John came down and they put in some new foam insulation in some of the cracks in that old stone foundation, and they put some more around the door. And hopefully, I mean, I can't say, because we haven't, it hasn't been cold like that since, and hopefully it won't be again, but it is a problem that, you know, hopefully we can prevent from happening again because that was definitely a disservice to our seniors. In terms of the air conditioning, because, you know, we had an issue with that, but we do have window units now, and they might not be as energy-efficient as, you know, central air, but they work fine. They're noisy, but they work fine, and things are going well. We also have much better controls in place with regards to money than I felt like I was talking to you about last year. Last year was very difficult, but now things have gotten much better. And we have good control over inventory and good control over our cash procedures and all of that. So that's been good. If you want to look at the budget, I don't, there isn't really anything that's a major change. We don't have any new positions, and the increases there are strictly just the, you know, salary grid increases. On our expenses, that's pretty much all the services for seniors. It's, you know, GATRA rides, our congregate meals, supplies, telephone, and internet. We do have a new line item that you'll see for $2,300 for printing. We used to get, we mail our monthly newsletters to all the seniors in town, and those used to be printed for us for free from a company in Connecticut. And they dropped us last year because they couldn't get enough ad revenue, and they were losing money. So they put that back on us, and it was in the middle of the, we'd already done our budget process. So I've been paying for that with formula grant money that we get from the state. But I'm glad to see that next year going forward, we'll be able to get that done through the, through our town budget so that we can use our formula grant money for the extra things that we like to be able to save that for. The Meals on Wheels subsidy, you'll see, is recommended as a zero for next year, and that is because of what I was talking about in terms of better controls of our food. We are pretty much collecting and paying for the food that we're serving by the people that are paying for their congregate meals and their Meals on Wheels. And up until this year, the town has subsidized that at a $10,000 a year rate. But with Dawn in place, she can stretch a pound of hamburger like nobody's business. And we have really seen a huge decrease in our food costs. And we get donations, we have people in town who donate to us. We have a food broker who donates a lot of food to us, and so she's really able to take those things and turn them into some really delicious meals and at a very little cost. So that's why we've been able to do that. And Michael and I have talked about that and have, you know, discussed also the fact that if there, you know, if there's a problem, and if we find like, gee, you know, putting that at zero really isn't going to work, we're going to need to subsidize it some way, then, you know, we'll discuss that in the year. But I feel comfortable with that number, based on how much money is in that revolving fund right now. And the GATRA subsidy, we actually have added as a new one because we do have many riders who are eligible to ride for free. And so even though we get reimbursed every month from GATRA in Taunton, we get reimbursed for the driver's salaries, and we get reimbursed for the fuel, anything, any money that we spend on the vans. But what we don't get reimbursed for are the passes that people, that we have to provide for people. So if people don't pay to ride, then we do lose that money. It's not a lot, I mean, $2,500 a year isn't really a big difference, but it is something that's new in there, and I just wanted to point that out. Any questions on the Council on Aging budget?
Anybody? Bill?
The frozen pipes, have you, you know, heat taped? It seemed like a logical.
Now, I'm passing on what I was told, and Dave's not here, but apparently you cannot put heat tape on pipes in a public building. That was the first thing I said, too. But you can't, it's against code.
Are the pipes insulated themselves?
No, but they've put some, like I said, they put some foam around them, and they, you know, they, there were some cracks in that wooden foundation. It's in, if you're familiar with the building at all, it's the part that's way up against the stairs on the back, and it's a real low door that's right there, and it's just this little, like, wooden, you know, it looks like an entrance to like a little hut. So they insulated all that around, and I think that.
It's a fieldstone walkout basement.
That's, yeah, that's the official term. I call it hut.
It's not protected, is what it is. If we get arctic blast like we have for X number of days in a row, Mother Nature took over.
Yeah, I've been working there now for, it'll be seven years this March. And we've had it freeze, you know, maybe like overnight, you know, we leave the water running a little bit, and it's been fine. This is a first, this is really, it was definitely an unusual situation, and hopefully, you know, with the steps they've taken, it won't happen again.
Anyone else on the COA?
Oh, good.
If not, we'll shift to the library.
All right, library. At the library, we had, we've had quite a flurry of changes in staffing in the last month, really. Linda Nardone, who's a longtime circulation aide, has retired. She's been there 20-plus years, I couldn't tell you exactly, but longer than I've been there, and I've been there almost 19 years now. So Linda has retired, and that gave us some opportunity to move some staff up. Janet Coleman was promoted and took Linda's place. And then Stephanie Chevry, who we had hired at the very end of the summer, was promoted and took Janet's place. So that was a good shift up for those people. And then we hired a new woman, Donna Morley. She literally started last Saturday, so. I told her, it takes a few months before you really get comfortable with that computer system. But so we've got some familiar faces and a new face there, and a really good staff at the library. We've been busy with circulation and passport applications, it just, it really, it keeps us on our toes. We've had a lot of adult programs. We started doing Adult Paint Night in the last couple of years, it's been really successful. We've had some author visits, and of course, children's story times and crafts and special programs. We've had some cultural council grants that have been great to bring people in. I am super excited to tell you that for the first time since fiscal year 2012, we were certified by the Board of Library Commissioners, and we didn't need a waiver. And I sent Michael an email the day I did that, and I checked my math like three times because I was so shocked. But for the last five years, we have fallen short of what the state says we're supposed to be contributing to the budget. And it all went back to one year where we took a couple of hits. But the way state aid works is your budget has to increase by two, an average of 2.5% over the previous three years. So if you take a hit of, you know, 20 grand in your budget, it takes a long time to work back up and get that average to come back to where it needs to be. But this year it did. And even though we've always gotten the waiver and it's never been an issue, it was just nice to know that we could do it, and I was really happy about that. We also have a new website at same address, carverpl.org, but it is a new website. We had a designer come in, and Amy and I put in, I don't even know. I've never mapped out a website like that before. There were so many pieces of paper on the table where we were working for each page and where everything was going to fit together, but we finally launched it last fall, and it's much easier to navigate, and it's done with WordPress, so we can update things quickly and easily. And it really has, it makes us look much more professional, so we're happy about that. In terms of the budget, like the Council on Aging, there's no new positions. Those are just contractual steps for union and non-union people. The book budget, I always put in the amount that the state says it's supposed to be, but, you know, it gets closer every year. The state would say $55,000 is 16% of our bottom line, and that's what the state says we're supposed to have. But we more than make up for the difference with what the town gives us because of passport fees, because those all go into the revolving fund that we use to pay for books, so that's fine. And, yes, I was going to say, most of our revenues are passport fees, and you heard it here first, passport fees are increasing. On April 2nd, the fee that the town collects is going to go from $25 to $35. So if you know anybody that has been putting off getting their passport, tell them to get it now because that's a change. The fee to the Department of State is the same, it's 110 for an adult, and it's 80 for a kid. But the fee that we collect. 80 for a kid, but the fee that we collect is now going to be 35 instead of 25. So, good for us, but not so good for the person who hasn't gotten their passport yet.
Questions in the library?
Questions?
What with that increased count?
It's, it's not us, that's set by, set by the Department of State. All those fees are set by the Department of State. The only fee that we can control on passports is if people want it expedited when we send it out, we don't, so even, so we collect the 25, right, but we pay for the postage when we send those out. So really, because we have to send them priority mail, it's kind of like a $20, you know, net for us. But if somebody overnights it, then we do collect the overnight fees from them, we don't, we don't pay for that. But the fees themselves are set by the Department of State.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else?
No.
All right.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you.
Ow!
If we could just take a moment, and I know we're going to have some follow-up conversations with the Board of Selectmen and at some point the Finance Committee, you want to just give, like, a quick little two-minute synopsis of the Council on Aging building process?
Okay.
And how it's evolved and, and kind of where we are?
Sure. So we did have our first Building Advisory Committee meeting, I'm not even sure what we've decided is the official name of this group, but we did have our first meeting last week, and we went over the preliminary plans that, that Michael and I had worked on, and, you know, it's a, it's a pretty simple addition...
With our former chairman?
I'm sorry?
With our former chairman?
With our former chairman?
Paula Babin.
Oh, yes, thank you. Well, you had to, you know, yes, with Paula Babin, who passed away right at the end of December, and is a huge loss at the Council on Aging, I have to say. This was a project that was very dear to her, and so I, I will, we will champion on, and we will fist pump in Paula's memory. But we did have our first meeting last week, and we've talked about the designs that we have and setting up a public hearing. I'm actually meeting with Area 58 tomorrow to work on a, a video broadcast that, that we'll be able to show the Council on Aging as it looks now. The idea, the concept is to put an addition on, onto the back of the library, to add dining space and some office space and some craft space, but to share that space with the library so that during the day, when maybe the library meeting rooms aren't being used, the Council on Aging can use those as classroom space sometimes, and then in the evening, because the library, we could, we can always use more meeting space at night, this will give us the ability to use that, the dining room as a meeting room for library activities. I think, you know, finances aren't my area of expertise, but Michael has done great work on, on trying to get that in line, and I think the latest number you're throwing around is 2.5 million?
We're looking at about a $2.5 million, which is the preliminary budget, and we're showing how that fits into our capital and debt stabilization fund. I think there's two other components to that. We also have a contingency allotment that's available, and again, this is a preliminary budget number. And that is based upon a view of building in addition to the back of the library and also redoing the entire HVA system, again, which we'll go over in more detail at the next meeting. So the financing is, we're looking pretty solid to move that forward, as well as with the police station, as well as with the middle high school sports complex. So all three projects are tentatively planned to go on to the warrant this year for April meeting.
I should say, too, the Council on Aging staff and the library staff are all excited about this. I wasn't sure, but they, you know, when we first talked about it, I wasn't sure what the reaction would be, mostly from the library. But the librarians are very excited about the idea of having seniors have a reason to come to the building, so that then, you know, maybe they come for lunch, but then they stay for a library program, or, you know, they, they go into the library and see what else is going on. And then, you know, same thing with people recognizing, you know, seniors who come and use the library who don't travel down to South Carver now. I mean, it sounds funny, because it, you know, it's, it's literally seven minutes, but for some people, they just, if they live in North Carver, they don't go to South Carver. You guys live here, you know what I'm talking about. So to, to have it be a more centrally located place like that, and have it be almost like a town campus, like you see so many towns doing nowadays with the town hall and the, you know, the police station and the fire station and the library and the Council on Aging, all kind of in that same place, I, I think it works well for all departments to be together. You, you talked a lot about departments that have been combining, you know, and, and so eliminating, you know, services that don't, that, you know, are redundant, and I think this just really kind of fits in with that. Although I will say, the library and Council on Aging, we were the first. But, you know, it does, it does definitely fit in with, with that plan that, that you're doing.
And, and by combining this with the library, we're again able to pick up on some of the utilities of the building, which, you know, will save a million or plus dollars by doing an addition versus doing a standalone building, where we can use some of the economies of scale and also the existing infrastructure that's there. Just as an update, the committee consists of, for our building committees, we've had, in essence, four core people that are, that transcend all the committees, which we call them our core building team members. It's Bill Harriman, who we name as chairman of every committee, and he's already given our new committee homework. So I, I know that some people got the homework from Ms., Mr. Harriman. It includes myself, Dave Sigintoff, who's our operations and management director, and then our private sector person continues to be John Deli Pescoli. Then what we do is we add new members based upon the, the, the building location and what the building actually is. In this situation, it's obviously the department head, which is Carol Julius, Ron Clark has volunteered, and then we have three seniors on the committee. Two are from the COA Board of Directors, Nancy Pino and Roberta DeCoste, and then also from the library trustees, we have Mary Ann McLeod?
McLeod.
McLeod. And I think we were informed by Roberta that she had many conversations with Paula, and it's her intent to help carry forward Paula's vision on this whole thing. And, you know, Paula was a wonderful chairperson for this committee, and what was also unique about her is she was also on the library building committee, so she had both perspectives. And the plan, the concept plan that we have that we're floating around in, we're going to have that meeting on, that public meeting on, you know, was really a creation of Paula. And she went out, interviewed all the different people that she could find through the COA and elsewhere, and this is kind of the consensus that they've come up with. And when is our, our public meeting we're going to have?
I don't think we've set a date for that yet. We have a meeting next week, and then we were looking at maybe the end of February, early March, I think.
That's right. We are going to be having that the end of February sometime, just got to lock in the date. And that'll be at 7 o'clock, which we'll publicize and show the concept plans now. And again, these are preliminary budget numbers, this allows us to move the project forward. And I'd love to hear any comments when we get there.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anytime.
And now, we'll invite the Veterans Agent up. Saving the best for last. If you could give us your name and title, sir?
Hi, everybody, Ken Morrison. I'm your Veterans Agent. I've been on board since 2002. Years are flying by, can't believe it. And as always, whenever I come before you, I always have great news about how I'm going to be overrunning my budget. And I'd love to sit here at some point and, and say how wonderful the revenue was this year, but I can boast that we do get 75% back, and we've been getting 75% back every year since I've, I've been doing this. And on your handout, that first sheet will show you just what has been going on with the budget since FY 2003. And you can see, when I started, the budget was $75,000, and if you look all the way down the end there, you can see FY 18, and you'll see that six months into the year, I've expended $129,439.27. It doesn't take a mathematician to double that and figure that we're going to overrun the budget by almost $20,000 again this year. Just amazing. It's just amazing. It's so busy, you, you just wonder, is there ever going to be a ceiling to this? It's, it's incredible. So anyway, that's the first page, just to give you some history, and then on the next page, you'll see the 75% reimbursement for the first six months of '18. And the reason I'm giving you all of this data is to show that we really do need that budget for FY '19. And along with those two documents, I've given you some reports from the state, just to show you what, what I look forward to every month, when I get it, when I get all of my authorizations back, and it shows that we're getting our full 75% every month. So, enough with the numbers. We help a lot of people, a lot of veterans, a lot of survivors of veterans in Carver. And thanks to the people in Carver for, for voting on that budget and voting, we have the money to help people who are in need, and it's just, it's just a pleasure to be able to do that. So if you want to ask me any questions about the budget, or go over any particular line item?
I know one thing came up on the senior tax relief, well, the Tax Relief Committee was, was sort of focused on seniors, but that there are tools available to veterans that might be struggling to pay for their mortgage and so forth. Have you found, and, and what we sort of heard was that a, a lot of times, the, the veterans are, not necessarily in Carver, but just are unaware. I just wonder, how do you get the word out that, of everything that you have available to assist the veterans?
Well, that's a good point. Well, I, I speak at the villages, it's in the COA newsletter, it's on the, on the cable access television. A lot of it, mostly, though, is word of mouth. People tell their friends. I get calls all the time, and people say, Ken, so-and-so told me to give you a call, there might be a, something to do. And plus, I do put out a, I don't have it here to show you, but I, I think I just gave it a copy to Honorable Selectman Robinson.
Yeah, you forgot my name, Dave.
And we talked about all the different things, and it's, it's always interesting when I'm getting feedback on what else we can do. So there's a, there's a great little letter that I have out on the, the kiosk right outside my office, that gives you enough information to make you want to pick up the phone and call me, because it's, each case is really different. It depends on the income, if it's, if it's the veteran or the veteran and a spouse. Just, there's just so many factors to the budget. Everybody's budget is different. Some people get just a medical-only budget, which means that we'll be able to reimburse them for all their medical expenses, and then there's a full budget which includes shelter expense. And so everybody's rents are different, and everybody's incomes are different, so it's all calculated individually and specifically for that particular family.
I can add just a little bit to that, Ron, if I could. I attended a seminar at the Heinz Auditorium, and I asked that specific question, how do we get the word out? And they said it was the most difficult challenge for a, a Veterans Agent, because each veteran is of a different age. World War II, they may read the papers, but the Gulf War, or the Iraq, or, you know, Desert Storm, they're all different ages, and they all do something differently, and it's very difficult to hit every single one. So we're, we're a small town, we're a small community. I think, you know, Ken gets it out as best he can, but word of mouth, I think it seems to be the best, if you know of anybody...
It's very effective, I know that, and if you look at the top sheet of your handout, you'll see that, I mean, we, we've got people coming on and off the rolls all the time, but every year, there's more and more come in. It's, it's, it's amazing.
Yep.
Other questions?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that, you know, Ken has done a phenomenal job, and, and I think the town has stepped up to the plate and tried to fund the appropriate amount for the department. And I know John, you know, used to remember, you know, year after year, the veterans would run out of money in, in April, and they'd have to come for a reserve fund transfer. And I remember like two or three years ago, like, where are they? I said, well, we're, we're finally catching up to that. But, you know, I say, I've said this to Ken before, you, you sometimes want to judge somebody by their success as to how well they're managing money, and, you know, I tend to say no to a lot of people when they want extra things, but with Ken, the more he spends, that means he's doing a good job, because he's doing the outreach. So it is, it is a little odd for me to say that, but the more he spends, that's the, the litmus test to see if he's doing a good job, because he is doing the outreach to the people, and, and every dollar that's spent here is reviewed by the, the Veterans Agents, State Veteran Service, anyway. So he, he's doing a phenomenal job.
Well, thank you very much. It's, like I said, it's the best job that I've had my whole life, being a Veterans Agent. It's unbelievably rewarding. You get to help people who, without it, they're making choices, medicine or food. And so it's nice to be in, to do this in a town where you're appreciated and, and the money is there, so that we can help these families, and it's just awesome.
Bill?
Yeah, just considering what the veterans have done for all of us, none of them should go wanting for anything.
Agreed. Absolutely. Thank you for all you do.
Absolutely.
Well said. Thank you very much. And it's not going to rain for the Memorial Day Parade this year?
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
Right. One thing that I don't have control of.
Thanks, Ken.
All right, thanks very much. Okay. Uh, thank you, everybody. I, you're perfectly welcome to stay for the balance of the meeting. If you'd like to adjourn, your meeting now...
Yeah, I think we will. Is there a motion to adjourn the Finance Committee?
Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn, second, third?
All in favor?
Aye.
But you're all welcome to stay. The town administrator usually is riveting on his updates.
What do you think?
I'll have to bring a gavel next time. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will move to the capital building project updates. We'll ask the town administrator, who's, it's your time to shine.
Starting at 8:40, 8:45, just on the cap...
Seems to me, every time one of the department heads finished up, you had something else to add, so...
An update real quickly on the, the capital projects. The elementary school is still moving forward, it's, it's ahead of schedule slightly, and it's well under budget. And with that, you know, as I mentioned before, we're able to purchase some of the dark fiber that we need to run in town, as well as some of the equipment that Dave and John were talking about. So that project is moving along very well. Middle high school, they're in their final punch list, just trying to resolve some of the window issues, but that is about 99% done. What we're really focused on is just making sure that we have the appropriate warranties for the long term and protecting the town. Sports complex at the middle high school, the CPC held their hearing, their public hearing last week, and they are committed to funding $3.225 million of the project out of CPC funds. Of that $300,000 will be a transfer from some of their available funds, and the remaining will be bonded for five years. It still leaves, I'm sorry, 10 years, it still leaves them with ample money to do many projects going forward. And, and there was something that was mentioned, about 20 years, they wouldn't be able to do something? That, that's not correct. It's 10 years that they wouldn't be able to bond a big project, but there's still ample money, they can do projects every year for the next 10 years. Let's see, the COA update, I think we, Carol talked about that, and Bill Harriman has also given us homework. I just want to keep on reiterating, he gives us homework. The police station, we have the consultants planning to come here on the 27th of February to present their report, which we hope to disseminate next week, and then to move forward into the next phase with the building project. But the, the, the report was really a critical piece to kind of outline the future of the department and what some of the staffing needs are going to be. And again, that is also built into the tax base. Moving forward on the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge District update, I have three of the members that are here. Want to build, please? All right. So John Carter, Bill is also part of here, and Dave Robinson. We have been having regular meetings, they had two last month, there's another meeting this Thursday. The district has appointed the three town adminis- The district has appointed the three town administrators to be the administrator for the district for the next six months. The district board also terminated the agreement with the consultant that was managing the district. The district is slated to end its agreement with Covanta, CMAS, at the end of 2021, or 2021. And right now, we're getting free garbage, if you will, from, free tipping fees for disposing of the garbage that's there. That's estimated to have a budget between the two transfer facilities and the disposal of the garbage, around $2 million is being picked up by Covanta as part of this deal, which the towns are going to have to address. And we're currently working together as the three communities to identify different options, but first we have to get that district up and running properly, which is really where the big focus is at this particular point. Did I miss anything, Dave, on that?
No.
John? Bill? Bill dug in? Okay. So we have that going on. Secondly, Stephen Cole and I have been working with a developer that is looking to build energy storage facility here in Carver right off of our grid system. And in doing this, we've had several conversations with town council and we see this as a form of economic development. In the same order of magnitude as solar projects are, where they don't produce kids and they have little services they require, but we get hefty amounts of tax revenue. What I'm speaking of is battery storage, which is the next wave of energy production, if you will. So that with all the renewable energy that's happening, and sometimes that happens at the non-peak hour, so you have all this energy that's created and they don't know what to do with it. So the idea is to put it into these Tesla battery packs or some other company like Tesla. And then that power is stored and then when the grid needs a higher volume, then it's released out on the grid and also stabilizes any of the peaks and valleys in the electrical signal that goes out so that you don't get spikes in it, which is not good for, you know, expensive computer systems. They can't have that running. These areas are pretty dense. They would be built within side of building and more or less, it's, think of it as a transmission facility like we have in Carver, something built next to it, but of the same size, but 70 percent of that equipment is built within a building. And it's all done environmentally safe and so forth. But Carver's in a unique position where we have some of the major transmission lines coming through the town and also connect to our, to our transmission center to allow for this type of development to happen. So I guess what I'm asking the board to do is, or proposing to the board to do, is that we move forward with, working with the planning board and our legal counsel to look at some type of a zoning change, regulation to this. And it would bring in significant tax revenue to the town and all of the equipment. Again, very similar to solar, but not on as big a scale that's out there. So the neighborhood impacts would be minimal. You know, in solar, I think beyond the first solar project we had in town, there really haven't been any neighborhood impacts beyond that first one. Everything's been running smoothly. So, I mean, without any objection with the board, I'd like to pursue that with town council and Steve.
Why is there a necessity for a zoning amendment? What's unique about it that doesn't fall into our standard zoning?
Our zoning is exclusionary, so if a use isn't properly defined or close to a use that's in our zoning bylaws, it's prohibited. And so as a result of that, you know, a battery storage facility is, or an energy storage facility, or anything of those different definitions that you can use to describe it, we don't have anything within our existing regulations to do that. So we want to look at not only creating a definition for this type of use, but also then kind of put in an overlay district so that it would only happen around key transmission facilities in town where you already have transmission lines coming together. So in that area is where we'd want these. They wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't put them out back here. They'd need to be close to the power grid to allow that to happen. And obviously, we would bring back all the detail, what the language is going to be and where the proposed locations would be, but that's really the concept behind this.
Okay.
Michael, I'm just, I'm just wondering if you could be, or if we know already, I don't know, where exactly would these be cited?
They need, because they're taking power off the grid and then putting power back on the grid, they're next to transmission lines.
Okay. So all transmission lines or just near substations?
Ideally, near substations. And that's what I think that we would propose, it's within the substation radius, that you have to be close to that. Because here's what happens, is you can put them anywhere on the transmission line, but then you've got to build a new substation to take the power down and then put the battery there and it doesn't make sense to do that. The ideal location's where you have two transmission lines intersecting with a, with a transmission facility, and that's where you locate it.
Okay, thanks.
And there's no danger to the resident, correct?
No danger to the residents, no.
Not at all?
These are just battery storing energy.
Just asking the question, definitely.
I do have a question about the safety lithium. It doesn't have a real good track record. And are these buildings have fire suppressant, I'm assuming inside of them? And is our fire department prepared to fight that kind of fire? Do we have the equipment that is required for that?
These would have to go through the permitting process.
I get that. I'm just asking a question.
Right.
So
In line with that.
The lithium, I mean, the example they gave us were these Tesla models that were charged with lithium ion batteries. Clearly, that would have to go through the process to determine what, if any, equipment is needed by the fire department. My understanding is the buildings that are built around these are state-of-the-art buildings that have some type of fire suppression, but they're also air-conditioned too, so that you have to maintain a certain temperature in there. So if you're building a building, I think it's over 7,500 square feet, I think that's the number, then it has to be sprinkled or some type of fire suppression that's in there. So we would have to have some type of an automatic system built into it. Beyond that, I'd need to talk to the chief and the deputy and figure that out.
Okay.
But, you know, as Sarah said, we would, that would have to be addressed in the permitting process.
Yep.
Not necessarily in the zoning process. It's more in the permitting and then see what they're, but I, I mean, I actually see this as potentially generating equal to or more than solar.
Yeah, it's got a huge potential. I agree with you totally. Just little things, the access to it, the fire, I guess all need to be cleared up, but, you know, the potential is there. I've looked at that on yours as well.
And if I could just interject too, I know when there was a lot of work done at the substation right off Paltola Lane, that was so heavily permitted up the Wazoo, and, I mean, the building itself, you know, you probably couldn't get into it if you tried with a bomb or whatever, so. And I know the fire chief was heavily involved in that.
Deep involved, okay.
I'll make the motion to be able to go forward, Michael.
Sure. Now, second that.
Further discussion?
Good business.
Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Two more quick things, just kind of giving an overview of the free cash. This year, it's down to $1.6 million. Of that, we're looking to put in 917 or a smaller number into the sports complex. That's the piece that CPC can't pay for because it would be part of the artificial turf. I'm going to talk a little bit about this in a second, but $300,000 for a water line extension for the North Carver landfill that's required by DEP. The North Carver Water District, $250,000 permit, GIS tracking software, about $40,000. Fire truck, this is for the truck we just bought, $30,000. We'd actually received $30,000 from one of the solar projects, but at the closeout of last year, it was somehow put into free cash versus leaving it as a side account. So in essence, I'm just taking it back out of free cash to use what its intended purpose was. $20,000 for continued recreation funding, $100,000 for snow and ice, and about $30-some-thousand so far for the special education reserve fund, which we're working with, with the school and trying to figure out if we can have a joint meeting with the school committee. I know we're originally looking at the 14th or 15th, but I think there's some issues with some of the school committee members to come in, that we can talk about that in a little bit more detail. Tying into the North Carver landfill is, as I've updated the board, there was an issue with the previous contractor in how their billing was being done and their operations of the plant. And we've since changed contractors because the plant went down and they proceeded to continue to do testing on it. As a result of that, we've had multiple meetings with DEP and kind of moved in a new direction with the intent of closing the plant down permanently. In order to do that, we had to go out and do a testing down gradient of all the different houses. It took a while to get permission to do those houses, and we expanded that to some additional houses. And what happened is that there's an item called 1.4 dioxide, which in essence is kind of like when you use Tide and makes the bubbles, or you use the old fire foam that turns the foam into foam, you know, so that it can kill the fires out better, that there were some concentrations in two of the wells. Now, the concentrations were below the minimum standards, but they were detected in there and what the DEP has asked us to do is just provide bottled water to those people, which we have, and we're working through and doing that. The intent really here is what DEP wants us to do for the long-term solution, and then you won't have to do the testing as much, is that you run the water line, because we have access to public water there, and we would have to pay for connecting those houses. And then therefore, the plant that really doesn't treat the 1.4 dioxide could be taken offline, which there's a huge operational cost for that, even when it was working. So that's, that's the $300,000 that we have tied into the free cash article right now. And both the teams working on that, Dave Seekins off, John Woods, and Kevin, our health inspector, are collectively working on the solutions with that with our consultant. But again, I want to emphasize, the results came in below the minimum standards, but as an extra precaution, we're providing bottled water to those two houses, which are the only two that are affected. Doesn't affect anybody else in town, it's just, that's what we're doing. So, that piece.
All set?
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll move to the selectmen's update. We'll start with Ms. Maroni.
Ms. Maroni doesn't have anything this fine evening.
Excellent. Mr. Robertson?
I have nothing as well.
Ms. Hewens?
Well, I just, given that we heard all the budgets from all the town departments, I wanted to thank the employees of our town for all the hard work they do.
I have a couple of items. I wanted to mention that, first of all, just as we're talking about a new, potentially new COA, new police station and the sports complex, that one of the things that Michael and I have talked about is to make sure that the same level of transparency that we brought to the fire station and to the school happened with this as well. That's why we're having a public hearing on the COA. They've had four televised meetings for the sports complex, as well as two CPC meetings. And the police station is just, just getting started. And I know that, you know, we've had some back and forth about the amount of money being apportioned to each of them and, you know, I was reminded that the fire station started at this level and then Craig and the entire staff and Bill Harriman went to work and they cut and they cut and they did everything they could and they scaled back and then they still needed some money and they came back to get some money. And that's the understanding that we have with the COA and with the police station as well, is that we'll, this is what we're going to start with, but if it's not enough to get it done right, then come back and we'll make it right. But as opposed to picking a number too big, then we'll just follow through. And so we're using a, an educated number that's been looked at by architects for the design of the type of building that we're talking about. But I just don't want anyone to think that we're confined to the numbers that we are going to propose to be approved at town meeting, that if, if the project, and Bill Harriman's involved with both of these, so you know it's in good hands. And if he comes back and says, this is not getting the job done, we're not able to have a good quality product as a result, they'll come back and they'll talk to us. But just wanted to assure everyone that it's the same, you know, the lesson learned over the years is transparency, transparency, transparency in all these projects. Also, just that there's going to be an upcoming meeting of the Tax Relief Committee. I'll be calling that bill very shortly. We had an article before the town meeting last year from talking to some of the folks that were there, as they got a better understanding of what it was. I think that it actually could have been treated more favorably. The idea is to have an income trigger for seniors that are living in their own homes that need some assistance on their taxes, and so that we're going to get together and then try to be able to have a clearer explanation at the town meeting as to what it is and hopefully get some relief for seniors that would like to stay in their homes but who find that taxes to be too much of a burden. We do have the town administrator evaluation forms due by March 1st, so that we'd ask you to complete those and turn those into Elaine Weston. And I believe, oh, well, I guess my last question was, we've been talking about having articles and everything ready by a month ahead of time. Are we on schedule for, by March 13th, to have, be done with the process and just wait the four weeks until town meeting?
Did he mention your review is just right?
It was, is the 11th or the 13th?
Town meeting is the 10th.
10th. I knew it was somewhere in teens.
That is our goal. That is our objective we're working through and we're just seeing how much additional time Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge District is going to take up.
That's, that's where you're going, in terms of not meeting the deadline for having all the, the town meeting budget done a month ahead of time?
I'm working on your deadline, yes.
Well, actually, Mr. Carter's the one that originally suggested that it be done a month ahead of time.
Not only the articles, it was on the finance numbers. The finance numbers will be done. The numbers, all the numbers.
Articles, we, 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 right.
I know, the scope has expanded from numbers.
All I know is it's a part of the evaluation, so we'll just go from there.
9:09, children.
Wow. All right.
Just saying.
All right. We'll move on to approval of the Best Buddies Challenge with Police Details as marked en route June 2nd, 2018. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. What's the pleasure of the board on the minutes of January 16th?
I'll make the motion to approve.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Approval of executive session minutes for release, the 19th of January 2000, oh, this is going backwards.
Can I just, just one point of clarification? If anyone wants to discuss these, then we need to table and run into executive session. If you have no issue with how they're printed, then you can go to vote them. But the moment anybody wants to discuss, we've got to pull that one and discuss in executive session.
Without reading them all, we have a range of executive sessions from January 19th, 2016, through June 27th, 2017. Does anybody have any concerns about, or do you want to make a motion to approve the release of those executive session minutes?
My only concern is, is if one of us hadn't attended one of those meetings, I don't want to say that I'm approving them if I wasn't there.
Well, you're actually allowed to now.
Oh, we can?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, then I have no problem.
My, my only thing is that I had sent Carrie three very minor changes, but they didn't have to do with the content at all. It was just that it said I was present when I was really absent or, you know, but.
As long as they go out with those corrections.
Yeah, Carrie got those.
Okay.
So we can do this as a whole?
So is there a motion for the release of the executive session minutes noted?
I'll make that motion.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Our next meeting will be on February 27th, followed by March 6th. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Are we meeting in executive session?
We are not.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Absolutely.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.